Okay, roll call.
All of them brought it in?
Here.
All of the calls, girls?
Here.
All of Zen Judah?
Here.
Over to this end.
Here.
Who want to be agenda?
Make motion for a vote of agenda.
Second.
Want you ladies standing on their feet?
Aye.
Vote. Concerned agenda.
Make motion for agenda.
Say, want you ladies standing on their feet?
Aye.
Vote. So here's the one I'll pass, probably the one where you have nobody signed up for that. Doc, you sit there and tell me if you want to talk, if you want to do it now.
You can. Uh-huh, yeah, sure. I, uh, I, you know, before I was an alderman and I was a citizen, I, like, two, maybe even three administrations ago, I did the thing where I wanted to plant trees along the things, so, and then that kept on, you know, stalling or bothering us, so, for one thing, to kind of backtrack, I printed out these pictures, these are like from, from Paris and London and, and they had to do with plane tree plantings, okay? So what that means is, you know, we are like historical heritage around here because of St. Genevieve, whatever, is initially, you know, it's, of course, Native American, also French, and since we, our area got approved as a French colonial Creole district or whatever it is, then I felt it would be kind of imperative to start connecting to that stuff to, you know, increase our position, you know, in a community and a state. So, in the eighteen hundreds, Napoleon never wanted his soldiers to have sun on their poor little heads when they're born all over Europe, so what he did is he planted trees on both sides of the road so they'd always be in shape. So there's kind of like a, like a historical romantic connection between planting trees along the sides of the roads and that, and this just demonstrates how nicely it looks. All over France, all, you know, rural roads, cities, whatever, are lined with trees and it's, it's just beautiful, you know? So, I kind of, I wanted to, you know, duplicate that here, and then we had a discussion about cypress trees, it's all been approved, you know, and I can't get it done until now, and it's going to get done now. So, I've ordered more cypress trees from Licking, Missouri, it's on my nickel, and I want to get them planted as soon as they stay and they don't get mowed down or anything like that. And I'm going to plant them earlier this year, when it's better to plant trees, which is November through February or March, and anyway, I'm marching forward with that. So, they, as initially approved and stipulated, they'll be planted at a, you know, a decent distance, which is going to be thirty-five to fifty feet, evenly spaced and maintained. You brought up some objection to the city can't pay people to weed eat around and stuff like that, if there's any cost involved with that, the weed eating or whatever, I, here in the public forum, will accept that responsibility and pay for it. I can't do it myself all the time, but I will see to it that it's done. They'll be mulched, they'll be mowed, and they'll be, you know, mowed around, it's not going to be that big of a problem to have something forty, fifty feet apart. We know that sometimes city employees have free time, where they're not doing stuff, but they're still getting paid. So I would also point out that perhaps that would be an additional way to, you know, keep this covered. The long-term benefits are not even for me or you, because we'll be dead in twenty years or less, and, but the community will remain behind, it'll be young people, and people will drive by a pleasant lane with trees at either side that are flood tolerant, there's cypress trees, they're not going to die, they're not going to get poisoned by, imagine, you know, by stuff in the soil or whatever, and if they're, if they die, then I'll replace them, it's no big deal. The trees that I already have provided and tried to plant, I started a little nerd head to finally stick them in my yard, and they're, they're seven feet tall, they're seven feet tall already, and they could have been out here growing, but I got stopped because I didn't get dig right approval to plant stuff along the trees, et cetera, and then it'd be another reason or another reason, so I need that stuff stopped so I can just get the job done. These things help beautify our community. You got a tractor and a dump truck or whatever, great, the city needs that, but guess what? Someone who wants to move here is not going to go, "How many tractors and dump trucks do you have?" They're going to want a nice place to look at. And a car lot with the grills exposed and stuff along the street, or the railroad yard with stuff piled up around it, are not pleasant, that pleasant to look at. I think we could make things a little bit better, and that's what I want to accomplish, so I'm just putting it there, doing that, and I don't want any resistance. That's all.
Do you already have anything?
Well, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it work out this way, but, like I said, the blood, when it comes through, it points out, you know, all that's going to be is a block for catching the debris and all that that's come through.
Yeah, that's something.
I understand about, you know.
I heard that, that viewpoint before, and yes, I agree, it's possible, but the way you're stating it and the way, we don't know that that's going to happen, that's all a, an artificial construct. It's our imagination going there and finding ways that we shouldn't do it, when we should focus on how we can do it, and if there's a problem, you just address it.
Well, I ain't got a problem doing, I just hope we do, but we can't do it without a problem.
Great, noted and understood.
Well, who do you want, you're going to, I don't matter, where are you going to transplant them to? Where are you going to put them?
Along the road.
Then you ain't going to be down like that, because first I saw them, we have, within three days, get into the road, that ain't going to happen.
No, of course it's not, this is just as an example, so you can have some visuals.
Well, I understand that, I mean, as long as it's them raising it, don't cause a lot of problems, I ain't got no problem with trees.
Okay, great.
And I never want to have a problem with the cypress, because I grew up around cypress trees, you know, the softest need in the swamp and everything.
Okay.
I think it's a great way to beautify the city, and I appreciate that you're continuing to press this issue, Zen.
But when you get ready to transplant them, you got to take everything under consideration, and old people plant trees forget they're going to be big someday.
Yeah, no.
And that's the biggest mistake with planting trees, I haven't seen in my lifetime, that little old bitty bush is going to be a big old fifty-foot tree, sixty-foot tree.
Right.
And all that stuff, we'll cover, we'll cover that as it comes.
Yeah, and use to our advantage too, like, you could have a big tree, but if it's nicely spaced, then it looks great, it's not a nuisance. Okay.
If you want it around right, they can, and we'll work with you any way we can.
All right.
Got our equipment, do what we can, are you talking about the city employees sitting around, in the winter time, they got a lot of time, but when it's summertime, when you want to do all that, they'll be there all the time.
Okay.
But we also got a few minutes to do a certain thing, but we can't spend days and days giving around trees.
Right.
We might be able to set some, but, uh, we'll see how it works.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, let's see. The unkind business is none, new business, audit? I ain't had a chance to read it. That's my fault. They named him right there. Oh, they called that.
Agreed to it today?
We can, we can agree to it whenever, I mean, they've done their work.
You going to highlight it?
Well, basically, when you get these things, the numbers are the same every year, you know, just, uh, the last two pages is what focuses on things that they find wrong.
Same thing as what I did.
They're going to find these.
Same as the year before.
And the first one, the same, the one that they do every time, they want two collectors, two clerks, so we can look after each other, and the response is, "We can barely afford the one clerk and the one collector we got now, so there's no way we could possibly afford that," and they understand that, that's why they write our response for us. And then I guess they found a couple of errors, um, in like a billing, and I think that might have been because of the system transferring over, something didn't come through right, so that was just a software changeover mistake, and they fixed that, and that's really all they found.
Well, you all, one more time, are you going to make a motion to accept the audit? I mean, there was no wrongdoing or, or no malicious thing, or anything, they were out of order, it's the same thing, probably carbon copy of the year before, one before that, one before that.
Well, I, I know, it'll postpone, I'd like an opportunity to read it, instead of just approving it without doing it, even though.
How long did it been here?
We just got it, like, last week.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was in the package here for two days, it was on your desk for two days. That's why we laid these packets out on the windshield, so we just stop by here, get the package, take them home, study them, and when it come tonight, yeah, they don't. I didn't get around by, I knew it was here, but none, nobody here picked up the package, no idea.
And they didn't know it was here?
But they're here.
Yeah.
They're here laying there on that table, they've been there two days, I know, we made the trip.
I, I like to have them ready Tuesday, ten o'clock.
But that's what we need to be doing, if your package is on that desk, I know that probably most of these come through, uh, it's not where he's gone, but also, we often are entitled to a key where they walk in and come and get their package off their table. But, I mean, I don't know, we had to be okay tonight, but if anything come up out of order, we have to address it.
Well, let me ask it, did you read it?
No, no, I haven't.
Did you read it? Did you read it?
I scanned through it for a guy there.
I didn't read it.
I didn't read it, but that's my fault, I knew it was there.
It's same.
And your package is always there.
I get it.
But I been through probably fifty of these audits, the main thing I, my, my question when you get audited, was there any wrongdoing? No. So the checks and balances are what they are, and if, if always you need more people and you cross over your duties, which ain't supposed to be your answer, I know if that's what it's going to be, you've never read one of them yet, but you want to take the one from last year and nothing here and read them, they're basically the same, if you want to go back four, five years ago, different administrations, different everything.
I think it's a good policy to read something before you approve it. Now, if it'll make everybody happy, I could abstain from voting on it, but I'm not going to vote on it if I haven't read.
I really don't care, it's up to the board, either make a motion to defer it, or table it, or what they do, it's done.
Just try to make the motion.
But we need to get back with them.
Yeah.
How long we got to get back with them? I don't know.
I mean, basically, this is the final audit, I mean, they, they did the work and, so we find something wrong, I can contact them, let them know, but, I mean, they've already checked off on it, submitted to the state, I mean, it's, in our order of mind, it's a done deal, it's just up to us to formally accept their findings.
This is the same term fees, the terms that we had before, yeah, too, correct?
Oh, yeah, they didn't do it for fair work.
The thing about, if y'all read it later, you may want to make some changes for what we're doing, then not that it's illegal or wrong we're doing or doing something, and then you're, during your next year, we do something different than what we're doing now, but that has nothing to do with your audit, they just make sure checks and balance and there's no stealing. But, and that makes suggestions that you can't do, because little times, little poor class kids take it, because of money. I know, the board can do it either way, you can make a motion to accept it, or you can leave a table, but sooner or later, we got to act on it, we got, we ain't even paying for you.
No, I got the bill in there, though.
But if something comes down with it that's wrong, it'll be corrected.
I'll make the motion accepted.
I second.
Want you ladies say, on their feet?
Aye.
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 Roll call, did it? Three, eight?
Yeah, probably a roll call.
Roll call.
All right, alderman, is that Hatter?
Yes.
Alderman Rongardad?
Yes.
Alderman Zen Judah?
That's the inner name.
Alderman Paul Schultz?
Yes.
Now, if we, if you stay at home, you got questions, call Dave on one of the questions, or if there's something that needs to be addressed, we'll address it. But I know the thing that they tell you, you need to do, you can't do, every word we be doing.
No, I don't doubt that, it's just a, this is a legal matter, and I think it's, you know, just a proper way.
Then I reflect back to what the aldermen should be doing, you should be getting back and be educated on what we're going to be talking about here.
You're absolutely right.
The package, we always, if the package ain't ready, that's our.
That's my fault.
But if that package is here on Thursday, if you don't want a key, we can come and get your package, you're entitled to a key, to the city hall, that's all we do, you have it, they be laying, they laying there every night, but some of it can get them through today. But that is your responsibility to, they're supposed to be here, the alderman's responsibility to have their package and educate themselves on what's coming up, when we can resolve these problems tonight with me, that don't mean we ain't going to have to carry something over or something, but if they're there, I know you work way out of town, you don't want to have to come here and pick one up. Now, I do, I take them home to me if I want to come out, I don't care how you did it, but you did, should have been in your hands two days ago. But it's not his fault that they ain't, I didn't read it, because to me, it's like reading a, a book that you've read twelve times. Like I say, the last two pages is the findings, and the rest of it is the same on the legal stuff, and my only question is, when the aldermen do that, was there any evidence of insufficient or wrong to it, illegal activities? No. And they, they even, you bust your butt, you know, you get there, you're going to crack it. Okay, we'll move on. Does anybody got a question, anybody? Okay? Maybe now I got everyone talking about agenda. Okay, the audit, this is okay, so emergency management.
I got nothing to report.
Police department.
End of the year totals, just a lot really going on, two hundred and three total calls for service that I've taken care of, current narcotics investigation, I want to ask the board just to take a note to see if I can get new tires on that police cruiser, they are down to the trail wear indicators, I did receive that grant, five thousand dollars, there was some leftover money from that to be used for the police department for those needs, so I ask if you would take that into consideration tonight, or whenever you can, so I'm not getting stuck in the work, because it's becoming.
Yeah, it's happened years.
And on top of it, while I was going to be down for service, I figure it's a good time maybe to do it anyways while I'm down, so, for a couple days.
What you having to do with service?
I hate, that'd be coming up, it ain't being service, it's going to be transmission for the.
Yeah, just if one switched out for the other.
We got the one that was rebuilt, the white one, we done got it out of the oven then, we're going to put it in there, it's a completely new rebuilt transmission, that's right, and plus we're servicing it, that day's ready to shop. All we're talking about, all we're talking about is labor and fluids and things, because we got the transmission.
Yeah, yeah, they're working tires, right?
I don't know where we buy them from, but, uh, I mean, we'll, we'll get that, I mean, have they take the four wheel, all take them where we bound them, you know, from them?
Or if we divide tires, I can.
Now, that's cheap, you're talking about, we're talking about, what, about a hundred forty mile an hour time or whatever?
Yeah, right now, the, the range between the brands, Firehawks are about, I, I can get a discount on them for about eight sixty, depending on where it goes.
But eight hundred fifty dollars ain't high for a tire.
Those are typically fifteen, hundred dollar tires, so, I mean, this is the municipality would give a little discount, but there's other brands out there that, you know, conform that road, and they're still rated for that.
We got to, we got the income coming, but it's setting up there and things are going to be court, we're getting a little bit of time, and they're getting gave, of course, you know, they got problems, and of course, I don't want to put blame over it, but we got a lot of money up there that's coming that ain't here yet.
No, it's a needed thing.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's a saving thing too, I mean, I've been piecing out the other one, by switching tires when they go bad, I mean, and I'm already at the point I've done switched out of everything.
Yeah, it needs to be done.
I mean, I can keep running it, it's up to you guys, but I know what's going to happen.
Getting in charge.
No, we don't need to, put one of the dids somewhere.
I want to apologize for this, it was a call earlier, that's all that was, just to contact somebody, and I do want to make a note, and for the Herald to make a note, that the UTV stickers are in, and they're valid from January to January for every year, so if you have UTVs, it's to be brought down inspected and get your sticker. Anybody not compliant with that will receive a citation, they've had plenty added with time to utilize this, so, we have that bill, it's privileged, it's not a right, and we don't want to use that right, I like them, I'm not going to spend money on one, but, you know, they've been fighting for, what, thirty years for this? And we sold a couple, so, but I just want to make that known, so people can start getting that down here and get that taken care of. Other than that, I really don't have much, you want me to bring up the grant, the USDA? You want me to weigh on that?
I might like give them more before we do.
Okay, that's mine, and other than that, I got nothing else to report.
See, a lot of people are done in misconception that they'll run from a year to day, they buy them, it's just like city stickers, they run from January first, January to December thirty-first, and if you don't have one, January first, you're illegal. Now, some people ask the question, they don't like putting them on the windshield, that's where it's longer, that's where you got to be. People don't, they can blame, they don't want that on the, on the, hopefully on the right, the auto part.
I get, if it's on the windshield or the driver's side fender where I can see it, I'm, I'm okay with that, every other is valid.
But we got in the order where it's supposed to be, don't we? Well, the order says that's what it's one.
Passenger lower windshield.
Passenger lower windshield, that's where it's going to be.
Okay.
We ain't going to change the order because if somebody wants to, you should be able to look.
It's the same as a city sticker?
They have a bigger.
These stickers are lower left side. No, they go on both sides, lower right side, that's why you bet.
They're bigger, I think it's still, because I would make the biggest ones I could, we sold two.
The bigger, I thought they were, somebody was saying about being big, but they ain't hurting the view down there with windshield, but the ones that complained on the other ones. But it's true, they're not going, they ain't going to like it, because they're going to be a ticket.
And it's, it is cheap, twenty-five dollars a year compared to thirty-dollar Winchester, Bierce Creek's very high on their assessments, I mean, we can go on and on, different ones, and it's a, a year, and you get to drive through town. Now, there might be some, depending circumstances, benefit ride or something that may come through, but they're going through sixty-one, but they're going a hundred miles.
You can, you can touch a little on, but they're that grand you're talking about, there is a grant out there, seventy-five, twenty-five, that covers a whole lot of stuff, but we're looking at a couple things, and the chamber is looking to help on the twenty-five, you know, we're looking to see what we need to do, and how much to ask for, so we're working on, but twenty chamber and myself, when we got something to report, it's, because we are going to take advantage of, we're going to do it pretty soon, because seventy-five, twenty-five, you can, you buy a police car, you can build on the firehouse, you can buy new debt, it's almost unlimited, the things you can buy except for guns and ammunition.
Ammunition, firearms, anything like that, so, this is probably one of the last years we'll, as a fourth-class city, be able to get, the higher tier city you go, the less percentage they take, so, you know, as a fourth-class city, we're eligible this year, say you wanted to say, set aside a hundred thousand, you might not have to use that hundred thousand, but say you only use twenty-five thousand, you're only paying twenty-five percent on the twenty-five thousand, and if you even wanted to roll it into a forty-year no-interest long-term loan, you could do that on the twenty-five percent, which is mean nothing, you know, I've seen smaller towns than this blow up and buy new buildings and add on and pig the whole streets with this grant, just taking advantage of it while you still have it, because it's even getting hard for me and Frank to even get grants, so.
We're going to do something pretty shortly, maybe we call a special meeting after long, where we can get some stuff together, and then, we're going to have a special meeting Monday night anyhow, full session there in your face. But we think, I don't think anything in that would be able to go in a full session for it, but, could be, depending on what we do, but it wouldn't be interacted in this, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know that the thing for certain things, we, we haven't been able to go pay the twenty-five percent on certain items, but we've been looking to help. Now, I don't know how much you're going to expand on this, I can't say for everything you do, but certain things that we do, what we're working on right now, what the chamber is looking to pay the twenty-five percent. Okay?
Yep.
You got nothing else?
No.
We hope to get the car, the transmission out of the white one, we put it down at the old, down treatment plant, they hope Monday or Tuesday, when you start the, they're going to get it, it may take them a little over a day, it may get done in a day, most of it'll be a day and a half, get it down, but something will go on. It will be, it won't be out of service, I'm not going to say what day it's going to be out of service, you're by news, I'm guessing. Okay, fire department?
We had three callouts this month, one MVA, one medical call, and one illegal burn. I'd like to address you guys on the illegal burns, I don't know if we can put something in the paper to let everybody know, maybe put some flyers around on door, but it's coming down to it where it's getting, with past administrations and stuff, it seems like, because we didn't have law enforcement time to do anything, turn it around, we would like to actually start progressing again on these illegal burns, you know, one time, verbal warning, you know, second time happens, it's going to be officer here citating us to take it to it, because I'm, I know I have seen already where people have been burning wire, copper wire and stuff, say something to them, and they look at you and laugh, so, now since we got law enforcement back, hopefully it all works out the way it should, which, you know, everybody should get an ordinance when they move into this town, all the standards of what you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to do in this town, and if not, they're more welcome to come down here, the city call them, get it. The other issue is, too, is if somebody's got a question on what they can and can't burn, they can contact me, they can be down here or any other fireman, they're going to know what you can, cannot burn, so, on that part there.
As far as I know, on the garden torch, the yard waste is the only thing legal to burn during daytime, it ain't so burned lumber, nails, matches, burnt yard waste with proper precautions. Nighttime, fire pits, fire pits on it, there ain't no night party, if you got a bomb bar going and it ain't a fire pit, you're an illegal burn, I don't care if you're twelve kids around, anything, it can get away you, the fire pits are for a reason.
The only other exception I have on burning any other thing than yard waste and having a campfire outside is no trash we burn, no trash at all, but if you got legal documents, tax papers or anything like that, you know, I know people can still identify really quick, throw them in a barrel and burn them, and stand there and watch them.
And that ain't going to burn up the deep smoke, and nobody going to see it, that's kind of like doing the flag, it's a private thing and you do it, you need to create the problem.
Yeah, so anybody, anybody, alderman? Yeah, um, so anybody, anybody, uh, alderman wise or anything sees any, uh, suspicious burning or anything. More than free to contact me, because I'm not at work. Uh, more than free to contact Adam too, if he's around too, but, uh, I will get somebody over there to check it out. I mean, that's what I had to do the other night when we had our little issue going on. But it's all taken care of, I think they understood, so anyways, uh, but other than that. Um, we do have two new firemen, uh, we're supposed to be getting another one here, uh. And then I do get ready to start a junior firefighter, uh, he turned around, he's, uh, almost at the age of being eighteen. Um, so we're gonna start him off and try to get him some training under his belt before he turns eighteen, so we can set him free out in open, so. Um, the other question is too, is I don't know how much we got in our fire account for the city here. Um, but we are, we've been spending quite a bit of our funds as in getting equipment, uh, as in, you know, new. Uh, gear, boots and stuff out of our equipment, uh, out of our funds at the firehouse, but. We're starting to deplete our fund because we haven't had, they haven't had no bar queues or anything. Um, I was checking to see if the city, if they would be willing to help us out with our fire fund here to, uh, purchase a water. Uh, L E D water sight gauge, um, which is a probe that goes into our tank and this L E D lights on outside to show us when we're half full, empty, you know, or full. Um, it's four hundred and ninety-six dollars for it. And, um, the guy told me that if we do purchase it, uh, which it will be for the tanker, because we can't see what we got in the tanker and when we're shoveling water. As in for mutual aid or anything, we're trying to get fat, you know, be fast about it emptying out. And it'll tell us a lot quicker what we got in there before we pull off. Um, and even on our fires too, uh, our rural fires. Um, so anyways, uh, he said he would come down and actually help us install it. Uh, it's basically drilling a hole in the tank, turning it, putting a fitting in, and then hanging a probe in it, and then having electrical wire system to hook it up. Um, if you guys wanna agree on, if not, that's fine, if not, we can wait till the next meeting or, you know, uh, during your. Special meeting or whatever too, don't bother me. Um, the other thing is, is on the new truck that we just got from Goose Creek, uh, we do have the stickers filled off of it. Um, the other part is, is getting the mechanic to start, uh, doing the little fuel leak we have and stuff on it. Uh, after that is done, we're gonna hopefully, uh, put it in pumping operations on a hydrant. Making sure everything works before we start even applying any kind of decals or anything to it. Um, we did take a wall out at our firehouse. Uh, the meeting room is now part of a bay, uh, so we can get all trucks in, uh, at this time. Because, uh, due to the weather, cold, we didn't want to pump pre-septic or anything on it, so. Uh, we're in the works on that, so if you guys are more willing to come up there and see it. Uh, we are in the process of actually demoing and making the wall different. There's, uh, tending it in and stuff, and we got some, uh, stuff we got to do, like electricity and water and so. But all the trucks are actually in the firehouse now, so, um, uh, it's, you know, that's why you don't see the new trucks inside anymore if you actually pass them. But that's all I had to report on.
You not wanna ask them what they asked, or they'll even do?
I think it would be good. And if I need to know.
Why do you have, you got your budget there somewhere in front of you?
Yeah.
I think I got three thousand.
Yeah. I mean, that's good.
Well, you know, it's, it's had rough this year, they think I know fire breakers.
They know that.
But the need still goes. They're gonna, they're gonna, money ain't there, don't take away the need.
With fire tags, or four.
And I'm just starting to finish too, on this too, so.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Need it.
Yeah. Why, do we have?
It's four hundred and ninety-six dollars, it's, uh, probably. He said roughly it might be another fifteen dollars, that's because of due to the wiring, but we're gonna try to see when he brings it. On, uh, if the probe is long enough, or we're gonna add one to a connection, but it's probably like another extra fifteen dollars, which. If it is, we don't have a problem taking care of that part. It's just getting it in and getting.
Uh, putting labor and everything.
Yeah, so, uh, cause we was gonna actually order two of them for four, the yellow forty-one. We were gonna order one for that one, because it has a little bit of discrepancy on the lights. Uh, and then for fifty-one, our tanker, but since we're, uh, transferred hopefully to the other truck. And that one's gonna go hopefully down the road to another fire department that needs it, uh, or whatever, um, that's your why they don't want to spend the money on that right now, so.
What's available in the account?
Uh, at the end of November, they got thirty-seven hundred.
Left, is there any other expenditures that are, uh, in the works, you know, or?
Well, I mean, you know, propane, you know, internet, stuff like that, but, you know.
So there's cushion?
Yeah, there should be.
Yeah, and then, that was the end of November, so you got December's fire tags and, so, yeah.
So, I'd make a motion to pay it, and, uh, since you haven't received any funds, then I, uh. I will donate a hundred fifty dollars towards it and the rest can come out of the city.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, sir.
I'm sorry.
Smoke your mind, take it on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold. And have.
Okay. Thank you, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, three. Well, let's see, I know Cody patched up holes on the street here. Got all that down, I think he's got the truck all ready for the winter, running months coming up, so. Other than that, I look at it looking pretty good for the street department.
We'll hit the coal patch, huh?
Did anybody talk to Cody yesterday?
I talked to him yesterday.
He punched out, he said he's got like a cornhole thing, he said, uh, seven o'clock.
The cornhole thing?
Well. Beanbag. That's what we want.
That was. And get my teeth out of my hair. I sure wonder what they would do.
See, they're seven and five or twelve and six.
Okay, well, he's not required to be here, is he? Don't be on tour for you.
I talked to him yesterday.
I thought, I, I, we went out and looked at the old white truck today. I thought the frame was what they threw on that truck. Not.
Tank?
No, they're, they're four-wheel drive, uh, four truck.
Oh, I was talking to the old white truck.
Yeah, I'm serious, I think about taking a bed on, put a flatbed on there, because it's got stove fly and everything on it and. If it ain't gonna cost much, we're gonna fix that up to be used, got new tires, it runs good, transfer bases good, bothering with one door. So, I was wanting to put some of this stuff up for bid, and still have them to spring sometimes. But we need a pickup with a flatbed for a lot of things. Right now, we're using that dump truck as a pickup and dump truck and. And it, it, no need wearing that truck out for small things like that. I would want to go. But I'm gonna, soon as the weather breaks, we get around through it, I'm gonna put this, if the drive chain's good, it ain't nothing to put a flatbed on there. The bed's fine enough. Going all the calcium and stuff we're using, most of them are frames worth to do, and that's what I thought it would be to do. We might be looking at doing something to that, it's got new tires, everything on. Now, yeah. Water is good.
Um, Cody gave me a nice tour of the, uh, operations there, and I appreciated getting up to speed on, uh, what they're, what they're doing and how they're doing it. Um, uh, he was telling me about a gas meter that they needed and it was, the one they had was not upperable. I was able to, um, get a replacement battery from the manufacturer, and that is back in service now, so they do have that. Uh, gas, uh, gas analyzer to tell when they're down in the pit, if there are dangerous levels of anything.
It's required for D and R to have that one anyway.
Yeah, so that is, uh, in service and able to be used. So, other than that, I, I think it's important.
We got one there. Frankie, you have to talk to them about this meter, but. We got, we got a meter, uh, I just handed him, we just got pictured over today, we've been talking about this for a few days, but. Let Frankie play with the meter that, uh, uh, the third department needs.
So anyways, what this meter is, can turn around, which, I know I ain't a big print, but what it is, this turn around, uh, we had a. Problem up here at the technical, uh, we've been having problems. Uh, and, and with this meter, what it does, turn around, it's a mega home meter, and, uh. What it does is it actually tests the insulation of the wires inside the motor, which, which you get you is you put this on the wire. Put it to your ground to each leg, because there's three legs, one a motor, anyways, for these units here, they're two-twenty. Uh, the bigger ones up by the, by the, uh, Sabreliner old building, up in Sub-ville, or bigger biker, so. That's the reason why I was wanting to go with this bigger unit here to test them too, if something happened. So anyways, what this meter does is you turn around and put it on there and it, and you hit test, and it runs down the meters on it, or, uh, mega homes on it. And basically it's telling you if the windings are bad or good in the motor. Anything under forty is bad, anything above twenty, you're excellent still, uh, anything that's sitting right at a hundred, brand new motor's never been, never been touched. Uh, which, because I know we do get rebuilt motors from equipment pro, van vendors, wherever we're coming from nowadays. Um, turn around, when them windings are rebuilt in there, the windings are not a hundred percent, never will. Unless you get all brand new ones. So, what this meter is, it turns around and it goes, it just shows you that fluctuation of the motors, the state or another bad, or good. So anyways, what we've had to do in the past, which, turn around, I brought mine down here, we tested that one up there, and when we was inside the panel. It showed us that both motors were bad, so I went to the pit, tested both motors, both motors are good, so we got a wiring motor problem. So what this is indicating, either we're gonna have a wiring motor problem, or we're gonna have motor problem. If you got a call company down here, you're gonna be spending two hundred dollars by an hour just for them to be down here, plus traveling. So, uh, if we get this, uh, meter here, what it does is it does insulation, but it does the voltage spook. The other meter, uh, wherever it was at, I don't know, they've had, it's an amp clamp, so basically what that is, it was like, I think, thirty bucks.
Thirty bucks, free shipping.
Um, it's just a cheapie, it's nothing in, uh, high tech or anything. But what it does is it just shows us amps on the motors, as in, if, uh, we're running too high amps, it's gonna kick it out, and it tells us the motor's on the other side. So, that one I ain't worried about then, but this one here is what I'm worried about, it's a fluke, which it's, you know, seven hundred and twenty bucks. Um, I know it's high, but Fluke is a good brand, that's all I ever use every day, so, um. So, uh, the ranges that we, it's over time, like me and Carl talked about, having equipment pro, van vendors come down here, travel time and everything. We're gonna save money just by fixing two or three ones, you know, this way.
Marion Cliff?
Yeah, on Marion Cliff too, uh, and up at Marion Cliff too, we do still have a little issue up there right now, but I come down and tested that. And everything is running good, but there is some bad wiring, so it's, that one's gonna have to be fixed too also. And so, but with this here, like I said, I'm gonna train Cody and Mike how to use this. Uh, which I worked with them a few times, you know, if we get a motor down, show them exactly how to use it, but, uh. Turn around, this is gonna save us tremendous amount of money, so to have the company come in and do it for us. So anyways, um, but you gotta make the decision on it. You wanna look it over, however you wanna do it, you wanna read up on it. But, um, I mean, I brought ours down, uh, a couple weeks ago, and that's how I figured out what we had, so we have to run a new wiring and timing.
So the cost is seven twenty?
Yeah, plus shipping and handling probably. I don't know if that's free on Granger or not, I know, uh, on Amazon, it was a little bit less, but it didn't have all the plugins and everything.
Yeah, I would, I would, um, recommend that we go with a local distributor for things like this. That are high cost and potentially, you know, need, would need service or have, if they have issues, somebody's gonna stand behind it in their local.
Yeah, and the other question is, do you guys do, and I'm not saying you have to buy it, but on there, uh, they do have option on there with the bag. Uh, you keep all your, uh, your connectors in and all that, and nice and pretty in the bag, zipped up, sunproof, solar, you know, uh, radiation, you know. Sun rays, sorry, U V, there you go. Um, anyways, but it keeps it, set, you know, uh, right out in the sun, deflecting off the screen, burning up the screen or anything. I think the bag would be, I don't remember what the bag was on there, I have to look on there again, Dave. Um, but it's a, you know, even if it ain't a nice little pretty fluke bag, we can find something, a case or something, but. So, um, but I think it had to be an option to go with, and I mean, it's up to you guys on what you wanna do.
So it sounds pretty dependable then for this year, even if we're get, we're looking at here?
Yeah.
Well, we're needing nothing, the city needs something like that, that. And like I said, everybody, spending money, you know, we pay. Yeah, for. You pay money, pay. And stuff like that, you save money by spending money. So, I can call one of them down here at the bar and we can spend two, even three hundred dollars. And we still ain't got one when they leave. And we always, there's several things that we've done that, that would've saved time and money because we would've known what we was looking for. And that's been going on for a long time.
Yeah.
And Frankie has learned a lot since he went to work for them, and he, he knows what works and what don't, now, I didn't want to say money when it don't. Seven hundred and twenty dollars is gonna hurt the Sarah fund, but if we get them called down here and two or three done, we're gonna buy a thousand dollars and do it.
Sarah, that's gonna be gone.
Yeah, I mean, basically, without them coming down and telling us the motor's bad, and we're getting a labor fee for that. We can be pulling the motor and saying, hey, it's bad, before we even pull the motor, and being like, hey, on the phone, uh, where do you want us to take it to get a rebuild? How much have you got a meter rebuilt? So, you know, it's gonna save time and effort, and it's gonna save time and effort on us pulling more and worse, you see.
Yeah.
I'd suggest that the board make a motion that we purchased it.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to purchase the, uh, new diagnostic equipment.
Hi, sir.
Motion made in favor?
Aye.
I pose. And I have had it. Okay, I think. Uh, park them there.
Ham, do you have anything on animal control or anything like that?
No, I have just one cat haul.
Cat, cat, okay, we got a cat there, we're.
And are there still issues with, uh?
Cemetery?
Yeah.
Yes, it's happened three or four times in the past two weeks. They're still going up there, so.
So that, uh, only way to really manage is more policing?
Cars are going in at nighttime and partying in the cemetery.
Yeah, has the driver gates, because it's a horseshoe, you just open it up and drive in.
So far, we ain't had no tombstones, and we ready. Clear bottles, wine bottles, whiskey bottles left, but there's been no damage.
And if we had.
Doctor Ray bought it, because we ain't never, we ain't never agreed or disagreed on it, and to put a lock on it, see if their cemetery too. For nighttime, you know, the, like, the walk-through gate will always be open.
Yeah.
Because they's people that won't pay their respects. They have a bad night, can get them to go to the, out, the, the level and thing.
Yeah.
But they don't have to drive, most people don't drive in and out, they park and walk in.
Right.
They people walk, open the gate, drive in, and then leaving the gates open when they leave. It's happened two or three, I, I've heard four times, maybe. We hadn't really moved, because we ain't had one, and I don't know if we will, but that's no place to park.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh.
So is that something?
Then you talk to Ray and see what we can come up with, because if their cemetery, well, it's our, so we're normal. That, they on the inside, we're on the outside of that, so.
And then the park is a being utilized, guys?
Park? Not really as much, I mean, I haven't, Frankie, have you seen anything really? Not really as much, I mean, I haven't, Frankie, have you seen anything really?
Must see a little better now, but, but it's not really.
Right now, they're calm before the storm season, as I call it. When things start warming up, we're gonna be picking up, so, you know, so the cemetery isn't an issue right now, because I'm worried about the destruction of headstones. And if that happens, financially, that's gonna cripple, uh, probably save a lot. 'Cause I mean, what do we do to protect it?
And, I mean, I walk there every morning, I've noticed that there are a lot of beer cans and stuff that fall, so which means people are drinking and driving. Is there a way to address that, or?
You have that proper cause, and I mean, most of the time, these people are out at three, four o'clock in the morning, like, just swing my shit, that's all I want. Until we get this budgetary thing kinda balanced out a little bit more, then, you know, get further along.
Yeah.
Then we'll be able to address that a little bit, hurtful, but, I mean, there's really, I don't, they can leave the bars totally sober, and that's fine. There's no law against them drinking, there's no trapping law, it's whenever they commit crime. So, as when they commit crime before murder, that you may have proper cause because they're admitting alcohol and beverages from their breath.
Right.
But I just can't start pulling people over if they have beer. Everybody might have, I mean, Frank might have beer, I might have, I don't drink, but I could have beer back in my truck, but I'm not drinking, but my main concern is the safety and just the care of the cemetery. I mean, that's, that's a place of rest, and it's a place of peace. You know, my family's buried up there, a lot of them, too, so we don't want it to look like the older side, they start getting, you know, destructive. What happened to St. Jim years ago, I'm sure you remember what happened up there.
Yeah.
They totally destroyed it. And that was right, Playstations, one, two block, nine, a block away.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We still got people that goes up there that, they're good drinking, buddy died some few years ago. Me a birthday or something, they're going there and drank a few beers, and right there, he found money, that, that, that money buy no round, I guess. But, I mean, that, that, that's bad, but at most times, that's done daytime or evening time or something like that. I know one affair, they did it for too much, we finally had to talk to them, and they calmed down a little bit. But they're not meaning no disrespect, they just celebrating his birthday or her birthday or, but they should take their stuff with the empty beer cans, not a lot. And they still doing, you talk to them sometimes, and then sometimes they get into it, so I don't know. They not a answer to everything. But I don't think they need to be driving vehicles in there, not, I don't know why they do it. But I'm sure they're doing it, I haven't seen it, but we, we know almost every time they do it, we hear about it. But so far, they're separate leaving the debris, we hasn't had no trouble, I'm aware of it, but it's a matter of time.
All right then.
But if you do wind up putting a lock on the gate, that's gotta come off every morning, even though people don't have to drive through it unless they're at the funeral, but very few people drive through there, there's some of them, handicapped and things, but, but then, we don't never leave them open, do we, Ray?
No.
Yeah, but, uh, I guess they would handicap them and took them, they open, drive through, it wouldn't be nothing illegal about it. And I wouldn't even wanna stop it, you know, very few people would do it three o'clock in the morning. Them people, they won't walk and anything. But we'll keep working on it, I hope nothing happens. Citizens participate, anybody ever got anything to say about it? Anything else left that was a... Okay, whoever speaks, hold your beat. Motion to vote, if we have one, order.
Make a motion, vote.
Smoke your maiden, bear it on, bear?
Aye.
Hold. Tonight, none, if you want to.